I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of March 21st, 2023 to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Marty.
Present.
Mayo?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Bada notified me that she would not be attending tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bartelman?
Here.
We're floor present, we have a quorum, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the banner of the United States of America. The U.S. Constitution stands for the nation under God, indivisible, in order to be just as for all.
So we have a treat tonight for anyone watching in the school committee. As everybody knows, Mr. D. Rosendies is doing the historical documentary of Sladeville. And we have a presentation by him and others if you want to come up and...
So thanks for having me here, I really appreciate it. We're going to keep this very brief, so I'll set it up. I don't know what of the series everyone has seen here, but the first season was released in the fall. That's the first five episodes that were on Rhode Island PBS. I'm now editing season two, which will be a little over five episodes throughout the remainder of this year. The number one thing that everybody says to me repeatedly, over and over again, is this has to be in schools and this has to be in schools. And I swear I should get this printed on a T-shirt. I mean, it's, I hear it a lot. And so the question became, okay, how do we do this? And so, right, I don't want to, I didn't want to lose momentum on it. So back in January, we had a first meeting with a group of people who wanted to make this happen while I was editing season two, so others could focus on it and get it going. We met with, well, first of all, Candace Smith is here, and she'll come up in a moment to present her work to you. Candace, Candace's maiden name was Pippin, she's in the film with her father. If people remember, a man named Carlton Pippin, who's in a wheelchair being interviewed, and she's the daughter right next to him. So her background is in education and writing curriculum. And when she knew that this is what we wanted to do, she was like, oh my God, I have to do this, this is fabulous. I said, great. So back on, on January 26th, we met with Zoom meeting. We met with Candace up in Maine, John Perillo, one of my historical consultants who teaches at Salve Regina, Allison Horx of the National Park Service, Molly Cardoza at Blackstone Heritage Corridor, two representatives from Rhode Island PBS. And we have since met also with two people from Rhode Island Historical Society to let them know what we're doing. We're kind of getting educated about this in the process as well because we're learning of some new standards that are being brought forth now and how that's, you know, may work in our favor. And we're just kind of just trying to learn about all of that. I also had a Zoom meeting with Joan Ducati at Ride. And so they know what we're working on. It's in, also in my goals to have a number of people, whether they appear in the film or not, work as representatives at different schools. Again, if you've seen the series, you know that Charlotte Carrington Farmer is a British history professor at Roger Williams University. I mentioned John Perillo from Salve, Barbara Tucker from Eastern State Connecticut University. And there are others that we've talked to along the way, people from Babson College, Nichols College, Rhode Island College, and so on and so forth. And one of the big things that we've promoted through the years, when we've gotten grant monies to do this, especially from Rhode Island Humanities and so on, is how do we get this into schools? And so, of course, North Smithfield, you're the first that we would go to, to try and see what we could do. And to that effect, you, some of you know, I've been in touch with Valerie Carnavale in the middle school, who has shown a number of clips to her middle school students and to great response. And I'm beginning to speak with Kim Ross and Natalie O'Brien at the high school level to see what can be done there. So this is in its infancy, we're going to start to develop it, we're going to try and get it going and see how big we can build this network and how we can get the series into a variety of schools from late elementary through college. I've also spoken to Oxford University briefly, that was, that was a pretty cool Zoom meeting. So without further ado, I'd like to present to you Candace Smith. Thank you.
Well, good evening all, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. I am going to use my cheat notes because I like to talk and I digress, so I'm going to focus tonight. First of all, I moved to Sladeville about the age of three. I lived in one of the Kendall Mills homes on Green Street, and I attended schools here, both Kendall Dean and Hollowell School, we didn't have a high school at that time. My late father appears in Christian's docu-series speaking about his father's role in the mill, at that time known as Kendall Mill. My interest in using this rich docu-series embedded within a curriculum addendum is keen and it's multifaceted. It involves family, educational motivation for teachers, for students. The fact that our little Sladeville has played quite a role in the growth of our country, let alone our town and state. A short, I could put my glasses on, sorry. A short while ago, I was researching the use of film in documentaries in education, and I was quite pleasantly surprised. Film critics, producers, teachers, educational journalists, wrote about or presented TED Talks regarding the importance of film usage and docu-series in the curriculum, and they were all incredibly supportive. Mark Phillips, a teacher and educational journalist states, "We need to meet students where they are. The need to use continuously growing digital landscape is an important opportunity for educators. Don't bewail it, use it." Film critic Jennifer Klein and Bevan Kidren, by the way, I didn't know any of these people until I read these articles, a British filmmaker who brought about the film ratings for the protection of our children. They all agree that film transcends borders, cultures, languages. I say, "Film helps to level the learning field. It becomes a common visual all students can relate to and converse about with confidence. The curriculum we hope to bring to your teachers is one that connects to the planned unit of study, and I'll go into this in just a little bit later, my promise, this is not very long." Why is it important for North Smithfield children to know and converse responsibly about the importance of this little village, Sladeville? And how is it related to our country's history as the United States began to grow? Many of us growing up in this town had little knowledge of how Sladeville came to be and why. We did know that the Sladers were buried in the town cemetery because we all marched in the parades, and apple sundae was a tradition created by Mr. Slater in hopes of defraying some naughty boys trying to avoid Sunday school. However, the big picture of Sladeville wasn't shared or even taught in our classrooms. As an international educator, I was always impressed with the fact even young students knew a good deal about their own country and many historic details that their families shared with them proudly. I believe we owe ourselves and our posterity the honor of knowing about who is Sladeville. So I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about the hopes that we have for creating the curriculum. Each grade level, and we are intending K through 12, each grade level unit created by the teachers will be enhanced with the previous grade levels theme and the content expansion corresponding with that unit and aligned with the newly established Rhode Island standards. It is our hope to have a curriculum component that enhances the teacher's own unit by blending the unit of study already in place with the film clips and some extensions that we'll offer. We plan to provide some projects with the resources needed, data collection masters and/or computer formats, formative and summative possibilities, formats for varied ability levels so all students can participate, and the film clips relative to each of the social studies grade level unit being taught. In one grade level, it may be just one unit. It could be more if the material in the film correlates naturally with the content of any of the units. If it doesn't, it just doesn't. This package will be teacher-ready, organized for ease. No teacher will have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, or create any component for the provided addendum we're suggesting. Once this addendum curriculum is ready, I would like to offer my assistance to any teacher using the addendum. I'm happy to act as a classroom assistant, tutor, rework any part of the curriculum for students of varied learning abilities. It's important that all students be involved. I'd like to leave you with these four points. This is an incredible opportunity for your learners, for the town, and for the school. Film breeds life into the study. It helps make connections to real people creating and/or trying to make sense of the events in that time period, evoking real emotion in the audience, and our audience will be students. The creator of this robust factual series proves our country's history is still unbroken. Teachers will not have to create anything with this curriculum. And thank you very much. I'd like to, also, I, I took the liberty of looking at the new standards and looking at some of the possibilities of units that may be taught in that grade level. And I've given some suggestions as to what standards might be working. And I gave a quick overview of something in a younger grades for community. You can let teachers look at it, you can look at it yourself, and if it's something that's usable.
Thank you. You, Mr. D. Rosendies, you want to say anything else?
Mr. Rosendies, just wondering, have you approached, have you actually approached, or any of you on your team approached Ride on this, the Department of Ed directly to see, because, yeah, I know that some of the people we have in our community work on that history civics curriculum, or actually the standards type of, the commission that's meeting on that, about 16 people. And it's just that Ride's very active with this right now. And certainly I think we could bring it in, you know, our teachers can decide they want to bring it into, at the North Smithfield level. But even maybe bringing it into the Ride level might even bring it to a greater audience, just a suggestion.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with Geraldine Ducati at Ride. And so they, and Geraldine I had known from when she was with Rhode Island Historical Society as well. I worked with her on a couple of things there, so she's definitely known of the project for some time, and I can definitely follow up with her to see where she's at, yeah, where they're at.
And if there's, yeah, great, I mean, I think that's great, maybe if we can, I don't know how much we can support that in terms of, as a school committee, what we can do with, because they're going to make their decisions, but certainly, again, I know it's something that Ride's spent a lot of time looking at right now, so, or, you know, certainly in the, in the focus.
And I know that R I H S is also working with Ride on these new history curriculum pieces. And, you know, I'm a filmmaker, so the whole getting this into educational circles is a whole new thing for me. And so I'm, I'm kind of learning as I go. But any suggestions I'm open to in the bigger, the more wider of the net that can be cast to a variety of people in different schools and different organizations, absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that, to reach out to Ride, I think, again, because I think there's a lot going, it's, it's almost, the timing's fortuitous. You know, they're looking at it right now so much, and I, I've seen the piece on PBS, and it's, it would fit, I think, in so many, it would check a lot of the boxes in terms of the post-curriculum. That's my opinion.
Okay, yeah. And if I could, I'm very much in support of bringing in Christian's work. When I came on about seven years ago, I fell into the orbit of Richard Keen and the North Smithfield Heritage Association, and it's hard to, not that I'm trying to break out of that orbit, but it's very hard to break away from Richard. Anybody who knows him, so, and I got very involved with providing photographs and for the calendar and such, but I also did a lot of walks around North Smithfield with Richard. And I was struck at how rich the history of this town was. And again, not just the history, but the geography and, and all parts of it. And was able to get Richard in touch with our teachers. And the North Smithfield Heritage Association has been a great partner, coming into our schools, working with our students, bringing in artifacts that they wouldn't otherwise have been able to touch or see. And with what Christian has done with his documentary, brings in another level of resource. In fact, it's because he was whining about the video system at the high school auditorium that prompted me to upgrade the entire thing. Adam has placed for an HD projector with HDMI ports right in the front of the stage. Yes, I was listening to you. All right, so, but yes, we, we, and, and the beauty, as mentioned, Ride has been updating the social studies curriculum to include local units. So that there is, I mean, there is always so much that we need to cover, but they're making space for exactly this, for exactly what the Heritage Association provides. So yes, we're, we're very much on board.
And I, and, and thank you for that. And just to add, you know, it's also, it's not a series about all of North Smithfield. It's about this Sladeville-Forestdale area, but it's whatever the story connects to historically. So we're in, what's funny about the story is we are in Norwich and Jewett City, Connecticut, more than even Union Village is mentioned, which is odd. We're in Lowell, Massachusetts, we're in Camden and Bethune, South Carolina, we're in Belvoir, England. We're in Lincoln for part of season two as well, so the sales will rise, if anybody knows about it. So, so it's, it's, it's an unusual trajectory for the series, but it's, it's where the drama goes, so we can follow it. So, does anybody else have a question?
I'm just wondering if you're looking for anything specific from us, or just presenting your ideas?
We wanted to introduce this to you at this stage, to let you know that we're working on it. And as I said, we're learning as we go, and we're trying to figure out how to do that. And what Mr. Connell just said about speaking with Ride, I mean, these are, you know, we're open to suggestions as well. You know, ultimately, how can we use parts of the episode or full episodes to get points across? You know, that's, you know, ultimately the, the best audience for this piece. So again, this is just an introductory, and I'm sure as we grow, we'll be back with more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And, and no, you weren't whining, you were being very technically astute in your assessment of the sound in the video system at the high school auditorium.
I appreciate it, but I can whine about something.
Whining sometimes gets things wrong.
Mr. Saint Jean.
I heard that, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a recess for one minute. Okay, let's go back on the record. We have public comment and community comment. Does anyone want to speak?
We have a hand raised for Christine Welch online.
Go ahead, Christine. We can't hear you if you're... She's speaking? Hang on for one second. Christine?
Oh.
Interesting.
Get the phone done.
One second. And mute? Would you like to try to unmute again, Christine? Um, I think it might be on your end. Do you know American Sign Language? Clarissa, could you unmute and just say something for a test?
I was just about to.
Thank you, okay.
Yep.
Go loud and clear, Christine. Can you hear us? Christine, I think you're going to need to get into your car and drive down here. How, how soon can you be here? It, I, I believe it's on your end, you can hear Clarissa and everybody else except for you.
I think if you leave and rejoin, it might be better.
Christine? Okay. Our video is done. Here comes Christine. Can we?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. Yes?
Hang on.
No.
Yes.
Okay, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cause any trouble. I all, only wanted to talk about that this coming Saturday, the Special Olympics Rhode Island Unified Champion Schools plunge is happening. I think a lot of people are familiar with the January 1st plunge that happens for Special Olympics Rhode Island in general. But this one in particular is for the students across the state that participate in Unified Champion, the, the program. We have a, we have a Unified Champion Schools initiative, and we have a basketball team and a volleyball team, and we have a fabulous group of students with Coach Jim Fitzgerald and Coach Christina Lima. Our school resource officer, Officer Vila is going to be joining us. And I just wanted to mention that we're at $1,891 of our $2,000 goal. And on Saturday, rain or shine, snow or no snow, below freezing or above freezing, we're going to be jumping in the water to try to raise money. So I wanted to come on and just sort of share that with everybody. It's something the students really look forward to every year. And 50% of all the donations come right back to the high school. So that was all I wanted to mention. And if anyone had any questions, they're welcome to reach out to myself, Jim Fitzgerald, or Christina Lima. So thank you for giving me a moment to, to share that.
And thank you for the reminder. And Clarissa, thank you for your technical acumen, because neither Adam or I in this room could figure out what was wrong, but you solved it, so fantastic. Okay, anyone else? Nobody else? Seeing and hearing no one else? I do, if, if it's okay, I just want to jump to a discussion regarding prioritized inventory list pricing of athletic uniforms to be purchased. Says discussion, vote, or other action. I, I just want Mr. Tech to give a presentation on this. I'm not prepared to vote on any, any of these items, but if you wanted to just give a presentation, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, good evening. So what was provided to you was kind of what was asked of in the last meeting, there was a couple of things that I did do. One was to give you a comprehensive look of our entire uniform inventory as far as if we would reorder from top to bottom in a kind of sequential order of what we're looking at and some of the costs. In addition to that, it was requested by the committee for me to reach out to Rhode Island's Scholastic League. We had some conversations about the uniforms, color of uniforms, and such nature. So kind of want to take this in two, two phases here. So the first thing I wanted to address is the overall cost. You saw a lot of times what we did is indicate whether we needed two sets, whether it was going to be home and away, whether it was going to be one set. I do know that sometimes when you put a full list like this together, you get that sticker shock of like, wow, that's a big number at the very end of it, whatever. But again, that's also looking at addressing like 32 programs all at once from top to bottom. That would be a good example to show of just how much money the, the community has invested inside of athletics. We're just talking from just a uniform perspective. So there is quite a substantial support financially, both by the school committee and the town as well, into investing in the youth athletics here at both the middle school and high school level. So kind of really wanted to put out there, also, you know, uniforms have gone up expeditionally over the years from when we first brought some things. So uniforms in like 2001, 2002 are nowhere near what the cost of materials, fabric, and manufacturing is now. Just quite completely different. We're in totally two different eras, so to speak, when it comes to that aspect of things. So that's also something that I wanted to just kind of put in there and say, this is using current market values right now, if we kind of stayed with the system that we're doing. One of the bigger issues, I think, that goes out there is that there's this notion that our uniforms are bad, or they need replacement, and things like that. So I just kind of wanted to show you a few examples of what we have in our inventory, because I think sometimes seeing it and, and really being able to put that together makes a lot more sense than necessarily what's always on black and white numbers on a piece of paper. So... The first thing was, I did go back to the league about the white uniforms. So with the football uniforms that we just approved to purchase last month, the, I wrote back to them and I talked to the executive director at the league office, and the National Federation of High School rulebook is very specific, and it does say white. It is in there. So when looking at that, one of the concepts I came up with and ran by the league was, is that we're going to, and we already have in that new order, it, I just changed the color of the pants, because it says white jersey. And I said, okay, white jersey, fine, then I will meet the regulations in white jersey. And I went back to kind of the old, I call them the retro, but what we had in the building when it first opened up, I went to gold game pants. So it's kind of a homage back to the tradition of North Smithfield in what we used to wear in the day, but a kind of more modern sleek version of it now. So we're going to have gold game pants that come in, so the only white now occurring will be just on the white jersey itself. So kind of a compromise, right in the middle on that. So I'm going to give you an example of baseball. You will see here in these white pants, or what used to be white pants. This is what I believe drives a lot of the conversation out there in the community when we're talking about uniforms look deplorable or bad shape. We've already had this discussion last month, that white is very hard to keep. You put these on right out of the package, they're beautiful. They're crisp white, they look like the Boston Red Sox out there. They hit the first ground ball and slide into second base, and this is what we're dealing with after this, it's very difficult. But even more of a prominent example of that would be soccer. Now, these shorts I'm going to show you are simply four years old. They're four. Minus one of those years was COVID, we played four games. And only on the way do we, we have these shorts. So you're looking at maybe a total of 25 games or so of uses out of this one, and it's only three years old. But if we were to put these back out again next year, this is where you get some of those comments about, what are we doing over there? What are you doing with our kids? And I think sometimes that unfortunately, it's just an example of when we have limited funds or budgetary standpoints, how often can we keep replacing white? And I know that's a frustrating point, not just for anyone who sits on the committee right now, but the athletic director is about as frustrated as well too, because I understand both sides of it. As a parent who has children, I get it from that perspective. As the administrator on the other side of it, trying to work with the budget and everything, I get it from that end as well too. So it's kind of like we're in a rock and a hard place when it comes to that. But one of the things to consider is the value that we're getting on our uniforms. And I wanted to show you a couple of uniforms, because sometimes the question I was always come up with, can we find it cheaper, can we find a different alternative, what can we do to, to change things? And I think that over the longevity of our uniforms, that's what could be considered in when we make decisions going forward. So Speedline is one of the companies that you've heard many often times that we've used. And, and the reason why we use them is twofold. One is that so when situations like this happen, if we're just replacing just the shorts and not... And and the reason why we use them is twofold. One is that so when situations like this happen, if we're just replacing just the shorts and not the tops or whatever, um, they never discontinue their uniforms. So they never go out of style in the sense that you can always call them up and get the exact uniforms you had remanufactured. Where in the past, previously when I took over as the athletic director, we we used some Nike uniforms. We had different uniforms from different companies, companies that were big names we'd hear out there, Adidas and things of that nature. But after two or three years, if we had a situation like this occur or something happened where a jersey got ripped and you went to go order a replacement for it, the company would give you the line of, well, we no longer make that style of uniform. However, if you turn to page five, we've got a brand new uniform style that's out. And would you be interested in ordering 25 more? And you're like, I only need three. Well, we can give you something close to that, something that looks similar to that, but not quite that. And that became a problem because there was a couple of times where that was done. And everybody knows that when you have the community member or the child out there who has the one that looks like it, not quite the same, they stick out. And then there's the comment of, well, how come they have to wear something different than everybody outside of them? So that became a problem. So um when we went over Speedline, that was one of the things that got taken right off the table. That was eliminated there. So Speedline, um, not the most cheapest out there, but the high quality end is where the money value is. So I've got a couple of different sets of Speedline uniforms that I'm going to show you. They're in different years. So I can show you wear and tear over the course of it and what you'd be looking at. So I'm going to start most recent to to the most oldest. So this is the version of our track uniforms. Sometimes they're they're asked for singlets and things of that nature, but when we added track and field on, we had to get new uniforms. So these uniforms are five years old that I'm going to show you right now. They are sublimated, which means this is inside the material. So there's no cracking or peeling or anything that's going to fall off of it. So this is five years of both indoor and outdoor. So 10 seasons worth over five years. This is what the condition of this one looks like. So when you go to a singlet, yes, you can find a singlet for $19.99, $20. And when you look on the sheet, you're like, why are we paying $67 for a singlet? Well, you've got 10 seasons out of this already, and that's what you're seeing at the um first wear and tear. 2012 volleyball. So this is how far back we're going back with that uniform. Again, you see the the plumbleness of this particular uniform, the material, just with that time. My favorite one to show you right now is, and I could reorder these if we wanted to, this is from 2001. I'm not a great mathematician, but that's about 22 years old. You could roll this out tomorrow if, for example, we wanted to order 15 more, if we only had 10 left since 2001, I could call Speedline up and they could put 15 more of these out tomorrow and send it our way, and then we could add back into a set. So the the ability to have um replacements, the ability to know that that's the quality you're talking about. Um, again, like I told you, sticker shock upfront, but I look at value over many years. What is the cost of that? I don't want to be coming before a committee and saying, yeah, we ordered soccer uniforms two years ago and I'm going to need order a few more. They just continue that and and I get them soccer uniforms one years after that. And that that's going to become very repetitious. Um, and I think very difficult to manage, given the amount of programs we have. Um, I know we've had conversations about how often can we recycle, how often can we replace and things like that. I think the recycling replacement is going to really, if we do this correctly going forward, target our white uniforms and our white uniforms only. I think there'll be an ability to stretch out our darker uniforms for a longer period of time with them looking, as you can see, as if they just came out of the box. Now, will there be an off incident where a jersey gets ripped or something happens along the line? Or we unfortunately played in a mud game that we couldn't account for, something like that, is always a possibility of some of those things. But I think for at least over half our uniforms, um, we'd be really good shape doing that and dressing in the white as often as we can. And only where we are mandated to use white uniforms. So uh, for example, those white baseball game pants I showed you, I've already met with the baseball coach and saying going forward, um, you'll never see another pair of white game pants here because you just can't maintain those to that that point in this level that you would want. And I just think for the value of our money, we'd be better off getting, um, we already have gray game pants. So there's a competition about going black and having a black on black type with the Kelly green and gold pinstripes down the side, things that way. If you slid in and you got it cleaned off, you're not going to see any of that mud or anything left in it afterwards. And so if you can see the years we can get out some of these, then there may be more additional years we can get out of that. Minus occasionally if you have a rip knee or something like along those lines. But I think that there there is a chance to kind of get a new way of moving forward with how we order our uniforms and really kind of key in on where can we change the colors to accommodate the maybe again 15 years out of it or 20 years out of something, but still allow the kids to look good out there and feel proud about the uniform they're wearing and feel proud about the school and the district they're represented. So it's kind of like, I'm looking at this as like a partnership of how can we take this situation we have right now, move it forward and make it a non-situation. I think where we're just worrying about celebrating all the championships that we've been recently winning and keeping the focus on that and and not worrying so much about how we'd address that issue going forward. So that's kind of an overview of what's happened since the last time we met.
Um, so those are jerseys. Some of these require shorts.
Correct.
And the shorts come from a different vendor at a better price.
So we we.
I'm a shopper.
Yeah. That's that's a fair question. It's absolutely a fair question. Um, we did that at one time. We actually had uh different game pants for football than the jersey tops to try to see if there was a way to alleviate money. The problem, you're going to run into that. And and again, it depends on how much OCD you have in you is you order black from one company and you order black from another company, and the blacks are often shaved. And so now you've got really, really pronounced dark, like the black color on the top, and you've got kind of a muted uh, or like a faded type of black, almost like a metallic type of gray, dark, dark, dark gray. And when you're wearing it, you can see a difference between those two. So it's like very difficult because it's like you're not going to be able to match unless like you, so for example, you order from Speedline, they're black on the top, which is the same material. They use it for to make the shorts at the bottom. And so you have that continuity through it. So we have tried that before. I'm not saying that we can't do it, but there is just that back fall of some of those situations where, again, same thing, especially if you're looking at white. The variations of the shades of white that are out there, um, yeah, I go into paint store and try to match white on things and it's just been China white, off-white, ivory white. And so I just worry about some of those concepts, even the shade of green and things like that have been problematic in the past when we have done some of those scenarios. I mean, even when I uh first took over, we ordered green uniforms through like Nike, for example, and we got Con against it far screen that would give it to us, and that was their green. And we went three or four years, we were in Con against it, dark green here. So we are in a situation where when we order some of our colors, they're difficult. Kelly green, for example, is not always the most readily available color out there, uh, known as a specialty color now. So we try to keep to the same company, but again, that's more of a prerogative of the district and when we decide on exactly where we want to invest into that.
Are we required to go out to bid on this?
So primarily with Speedline, when that's about, I would say with 80% of our uniform inventory here, they're on an MPA and they're on a consortium that we deal with, and they're a sole source provider of uh, so Roga Marciano, one of the vendors we use, is the sole source provider of Speedline. So we can only get through them to get Speedline. We can't deal with Speedline directly.
But it's on the state master price of green.
Right.
Right. I just didn't know if we went out to bid, if someone would come in with better numbers.
Again, I I think honestly, I'm certain you could find better numbers. The question's going to be the quality. And that's my concern more than anything else because I at least can stand before you with 100% confidence that I've got um almost nearly a 20-year track record working with Speedline now at the AD. I know what they have. I can show you what they have. I know what I'm getting if I order from them. I can't make you that same promise depending on which other vendors we went with. And I don't want to say, I don't want to say that's like a definite no to that. I just want to point out that, you know, there's something about having the ability to say 100% certainty versus the unknown, when and if we are talking about large investment.
How far back does Speedline guarantee the uniforms that they can match?
So when I came here and I started this district in 2003, their football team was uniform from 1992. And I could order the 1992 version of football uniforms that we had here in North Smithfield. So the only thing that changes over in these years might be slight improvements in quality of the material they're using. Might end up going with a lighter material for dry wicking purposes and, you know, the kids, they feel more cooler when that. And that just happened very recently with the new basketball uniforms that we had brought in this year. They were the exact same model and make, but the material was four times lighter. And the kids noticed that right away. So it's, if you manufacture it again, it's just changing and improvement in the quality of the material nowadays than what was offered back in the 90s and early 2000s.
And when we get the greens and the golds, are you able to send them the hexadecimal value of the color to have them match it exactly? Or how how precise is?
Well, you're 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 going to put an example of this right here. So this is kind of the green and gold that they were using. And that's about really as close to Kelly green or on Kelly green you're going to get, and that's from 2001. And they have pretty much stayed within that that realm of staying right in that shade of being true to that color. So they don't, they have many shades of the yellow and the greens, a palette to pick from. But we, because we use the same color palette, so to speak, when we go to order uniforms, they know they have the North Smithfield name. And it's like, all right, Kelly green, gold, they pull the Kelly green and gold that they've been using on all the uniforms you get from them. So we have a consistent Kelly green and gold sampling across all of our uniforms that match, and it's no variation, one way or another on that.
So I know six years ago, um, when I became chairman, you did come to me and say, I think that we need to go to Speedline. You showed me different things. And you said, here's the quality. It'll it'll pay for itself down the road. So I I know that we went. We we did try it in the past. And, you know, I can understand maybe on some white stuff.
Well, well, I was just figuring gym shorts, basketball shorts. They don't have to be that brand necessarily.
Not, and I.
My father owned the textile though. I understand fabric and I understand he had a print shop. I know colors. I was the sample girl.
Yep.
Um, and you can't always get the same dye loss. But I just didn't know if, yes, the jerseys are very nice. They're what we want, but a gym shirt, can't we get it somewhere else?
And again, as I've indicated, you could, you could.
But the dye loss could be off or the fabric context.
And and you know, my bigger concern is is consistency, as you said right there, number one. And I think also that, you know, when and if we do make investments in this, um, I'm also very aware of negative backlash from out there in the community, which would be like, you can't even get matching sets of uniforms. You can't get the bottoms that match the tops. We know that that's going to be the messages we're going to receive. And and again, I'm very consciously aware of budget and I I take that seriously into consideration. Making any kind of recommendations whatsoever. We're also going to face that backlash of, uh, there it is, North Smithfield saving a penny, going on the cheat, getting something a little bit, and we we dealt with that just from anything, not even just athletics, from the building to the middle school to anything else, that find a way that you had an opportunity to do it this way, you chose to do it this way, and now we're facing that. So like I said, I I 100% agree with you. Can it be done? Absolutely. It could be. I guess it's more of a preference of what we want. The other thing we're trying to push a little harder with, one of the concepts that uh what we presented to the committee six years ago, as you mentioned right there, if we can do uh more of a kind of sell job on it, is that because Speedline does guarantee the ability to remanufacture, there has been an increase and kind of COVID put that on the back burner for the last couple of years. But kids that graduate want their uniform. They want their uniform. That has been a known thing. They played baseball for 12 years in there. Their 12th year, the senior leaving, they wore that uniform for four years. It was their number. Their 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 slides in the home base, their home run, they're all the memories are tied into that thing. So there is an ability for parents and all the kids as a graduation gift, when they're leaving, to purchase the uniform. And if you purchase the uniform, what happens is the way we've done it in the past with Speedline is that you order, I'm using a sample here, the number 12. If someone wore this, they go, I want my number 12. I'm taking it with me when I graduate from North Smithfield High School. I can call up and order the exact same number 12, the exact same specifications. The new one comes in, but that's what the customer ordered. Customer, the child, the graduate senior, doesn't want the brand new one out of the box. They want the one they want. So what they do is they say, I'm going to give you a brand new number 12. So I can take my number 12 with me and hang it on my wall, put it in a shadow box and of that nature. If we can do that and we have the larger groups of seniors graduating and that nature, you could start artificially replacing your uniform within the sets already. Um, basically as a as an even swap. It would not cost the district any money because the student had purchased, bought that to be their own personal jersey now. On the flip side of it, the district inherits a brand new uniform in place of it. So there are some concepts that you have that ability to do that, which we could not even entertain as an option if we were doing any other companies that don't guarantee. We just don't do that. So that's just something else to consider in all of this as well too. But again, I I know this is a very big ask and I know that this is a hot button item out there that people are talking about. And I know there's going to be no action on it tonight, but it's just, I wanted to at least provide samples, understanding behind it, answering the questions that you might have so that we can have a plan after we want to move forward.
So I just have one question. You said, do we have a petty cash account?
No, we mean, you. He's just going to tell me.
Superintendent, do you have that credit card?
Is there a grant? Can we write a grant for it?
No, but seriously, um, if you bring those pants, the white ones, to a dry thing and have it dry themed, I wonder what the difference would be.
That's why, that's why I asked. And we at the end of the season.
But I, but there's an example, we can, we can, there's a hot example right there.
Would you like me to take that out and try it? And then report that to you and see how those.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm going to grab a bunch of different samples of our white pants.
Oh, well, I mean, just, I don't want you to do a bunch of, I mean.
Well, I just feel.
Makes a difference.
There's also some difference in material. So I'd like to see like a baseball pant versus a soccer shorts or something like that. Just to see, we might find out, well, that's that's the one material we want to stay away from, but these other two.
That's why I wanted petty cash.
So I'll I'll get Mr. St. Jean's credit cards because he's tonight.
Right.
Anything else I can answer for you?
You just said that it must be white jersey. That's the um, so.
So certain, so certain teams will allow you to change it. So on basketball, for example, it's white and white. So there are certain, like soccer, it's white and white. So certain teams are required to get tops and bottoms in white. Certain ones, they'll specifically say just jersey.
Oh.
So anyone like I have the jersey, I'm changing over, doing alternate color for the pants so that we can try to eliminate many of those situations. Like baseball does not require white pants at all. So we can change it. We have two distinctive uniforms for baseball. So anything that can allow me to get away from white, I I am doing that color.
Okay, and the colors, so with the darker color?
Yeah, so some, I try to, it depends on the white. I usually tend to stay in with a kind of a gold or some kind of the Kelly green, those are the lighter of our colors and try to stay away from anything that's super dark, just because we have a darker uniform already with our blacks. That would be an example of like, we have black on black and so.
I'm, I might just go with gold because I have a standard for gold.
We, like I said, the only, my only previous experience with gold pants have been when we used to wear it for football because I came in '03, we were still wearing the gold. They held up, but we used those for many years. Um, and hopefully we'll see, again, we're only going to have to be wearing them on the road. So half the amount of time, when when I was here, we only had one set of game pants, so we wore them home and away. And that's just what we wore. So half the amount of time of being worn helps. And then there's also movement among some of the schools that we've been playing recently, moving to artificial turf fields. So some of the teams that we've been playing at Hagg Grass Fields, like the North Providence, something like that, they're installing turf fields right now. So who knows, maybe five or 10 years down the road, we're playing on turf home and away. And now the white doesn't become as much of an issue there. We'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Tech. And you have a question. And I, when we ask you to clean things, I don't want you to take money out of your pocket, right? We have a, hopefully we have an accomplishment. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, uh, I'll, um, I'll continue a motion to continue that matter to the next meeting.
Promote.
Motion to make, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? The ayes. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions about the consent agenda or want to take anything off?
I I would just like to make one clarification. Um, on number seven, on the approval of regular session minutes, um, I did not care to the judge. I was just there as a unreserved. I guess there's uh, it's one that has to be clarified.
Yeah.
It's it's um, it's number seven on the regular session minutes from 2/21 to 2/3.
Oh.
Exactly. Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know that's gonna.
I remember one other.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any, any further questions? So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as amended.
So move.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent? All I wanna say is happy spring. The spring events are going to be coming in fast and furious and the kids are going to have a marvelous time. Great.
It, it is fabulous. I actually was at a concert last night. I'll be at a concert on Thursday. I've been to several festivals and it is fabulous.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, the, uh, informational, uh, part. These are coaching assignments. Anybody have any questions on these? Hearing none, we'll move to old business. Uh, item number one, fiscal year twenty-three operating capital budget. Anything, Lisa? Fiscal year twenty-four operating capital budget.
Still to work.
Wow.
Uh, the bid, uh, the two bids needed for tomorrow, because it's been four fifty-six.
Great. So we're looking for cost savings of three districts combined as opposed to just us. Good luck. Um, Superintendent, the next item is approval of the discussion regarding the, uh, North Smithfield Public Schools' medical marijuana policy. We want that continued, is that correct?
We're looking to continue that, uh, until the, uh, table meeting.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, continue that matter.
So move.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, moving on to old business five, discussion regarding contract for parking lot extension. At the Paul F. Joyce Athletic Complex.
So it's, what this is referring to is, uh, included in the packet was a cost analysis. Uh, Studio J, Dr. Pechalon Engineering Firm, that took a look at the green development proposal. Um, along with what we had also talked about is just using, uh, uh, local funds with wide reimbursement to do a parking lot extension. So you see. That report that I gave you had questions, comments, and concerns regarding green development. And their recommendation was that we do not pursue the solar canopy project and that we just extend. If we're to extend the parking lot, we do it ourselves, uh, through the ride program.
Do you have any questions?
Chair, I think I thought on, on that, and it's not a big, I, I'm not, I disagree with the superintendent. I just did notice, I made a note. Yeah, a lot of letters says based on limited information. And I was just wondering if, so the only thing I was thinking was should they make a, should there be some follow-up inquiry?
You're, what, you're welcome to do that and, um, you know, uh, we can pursue some of those questions with green development in the town and get the answers.
Well, I guess it's a discussion for the board to decide, you know, I mean, that, that's the only thing I was wondering.
I just wanted to show you the results of their, their, their recommendations. And with the intent to send it on to the town administrator and the town council, or however, the chair would like to handle that. So I, I agree with you. When I, when I read it, um, I, they did a presentation. They didn't have an, first of all, that still has to be RFP'd, I assume. Um, so they, I, I wouldn't expect many of those questions to be answered by a presentation. So I, 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 I agree with you. Um, that, um, you know, and even some of the questions, I, to be honest with you, I raised, uh.
We all did, yes.
That's right. We all raised them. Um, so I, I just don't, I'm, I'm neutral on the whole situation. So.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's whatever the board wants to do. I'm, I'm with.
Well, if we go out for the RFP to actually get. Different prices before we make a final decision.
We'd need to have, for the RFP, we would have to commission a psych survey schematic engineering. Um, designs. Would we have to do that for either? So let, let me say this. What happens if we go out to bid for, to redo the parking lot? And green development comes in and says, we'll do it for free and here's the basis of what we'll do it for free for, or we'll do it for whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, why, why not, why exclude them from bidding? You know, just, I, so.
I, I, I don't have.
And I'm not, I'm not debating with you. Again, I'm neutral on it, but again, if, like I said, at one meeting, and this might be a little obnoxious. Somebody wants to do it free instead of a big Pepsi Bowl or jumble in the middle of it.
Right.
Free, but I'm good with that.
And, and, and.
Or at least we can. That was, that was, somebody has to write that big document and we don't have the capacity to write a big document with. Whether it includes solar or, we, we would have to commission somebody to put together the specifications. So how are you going to do it without solar?
Right.
Are we going to do it without solar? That's easy. Solar is the, is the difficult one. No, 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 but you're going to, so go out exactly how you would and say if there's any other. Way, you know, if there's any other bids or, or.
That, that's fine. We'll put something together and put it out.
Well, I'm just asking. I mean, so, so it would say, uh, parking lot, whatever, X, Y, Z. But if you have an alternative, you know, bid. An alternative way to pay for this or something else, please make it part of your bid. And they're gonna have to do all the.
The legwork.
Legwork. But I, I, I'm just.
That's fine.
I'm just bringing that up.
So this is by the purpose of, like, flexibility. So I think that's.
That's the parking, yeah, the solar isn't.
Right.
So the, 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 the parking is ride reimbursable. So there is a process we have to follow in order to have it. Um. Eligible for re- reimbursement. So if, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll.
But that has to go out to bid also.
Mm-hmm. Or unless, uh, uh, a parking company, uh, 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 company is on the MPA, then they can. We, we do have an initial cost for a company that was on, on the MPA and it was a hundred forty thousand dollars to do it in house. Of which thirty-five to forty percent could be widely reimbursable. But we can put the full thing out and go for solar. That's. But, but Ride has, Ride has to weigh in on this and, and, yeah.
But I would like it to go out to bid rather than just taking that one price that we got because I don't know how much detail went into that price.
So we took out the bid, but Ride, you know, yeah.
And typically, we, we, we hire an architect or an engineering firm to develop the specification. They go out for bid, they review the bid, and then. The specifications are given to Ride along with schematics for every element. We, we actually, and I hate to say this, we, we. We go through the ride process. And we'll get some, and we'll get the reimbursement, but depending on the project, sometimes it's cheaper not to go through the ride process. Um, but we do follow the ride process. Yeah, I'm, I'm neutral on it. So I, I don't, I don't, I mean, we can also continue the matter. We wanna think about it more or if you wanna come back or you say, I, I. So. I mean, so first of all, we're gonna need a technical, you know, how many inches thick is the, the. Ash wall with the grain in your chest, so we, so we have to do all that anyway. Which, which we had with the, the company that came in, but if we don't, you, and we can use a piece of that and still go out for bid. But if we want to accommodate solar, it's going to be a much bigger design. And I don't know if, right, tell, tell you what. Let me go over with Alan. We'll meet with Ride. We'll spend whatever it takes to put together this bid document. We'll pass it through Ride. We'll, we'll see the feasibility. Um, this, uh, designing firm, you can share their findings. You can take it back. You can take it back to green development to see if they can answer the questions that were unanswered. Um, we'll just pursue it.
Um, um, that sounds like a logical way to do this. It sounds like it's getting more information and keeping things alive. Uh, again, I wanna, I'm a guy like a chair. I, I'm neutral on it in terms of which way to go. Just trying to figure out. I admit, I filled a little bit of my head in terms of what's the right way to go, you know, um.
Uh, I did take a ride down to URI a few weeks ago, um, just to see. Cause I wanted to see the visual. I didn't wanna see pictures and I wasn't here when the presentation was done. Um. Is it something we could reach out to URI to question their bid documents or just? How they got the process going?
Sure. And how they, if they liked it and, too.
Right.
What their.
I mean, I went. And I think nobody was there that day.
You, you, you just asked us a couple of months ago to make a recommendation. We made the recommendation that if you want as a group to go ahead and. You have full on pursuing solar, we will, we will do that. I don't think that's what we're saying. I don't, I don't think we're saying full out, would wanna full out press on solar. I think we, we, I, I, right?
Um, yeah, I think we said we don't.
Maybe it could be a bad idea.
Yeah.
Or it could, if you call, first of all, URI had to bid it or they have to be on an MPA. We might even be able to piggyback off of them. Um, and so let's, let's just try to get a little more information. I mean, it's over a hundred thousand dollar swing with the reimbursement. So.
Okay.
I think just looking for an option. It doesn't have to be that we're looking for everyone to come in that is going to do solar, but. If they would propose to put it along with the parking lot, what would it look like?
And, and, and again, I don't wanna keep, one of the concerns that we have. With the solar canopy is that we do get an awful lot of vandalism down there and. I can check with URI if it's a, they've had a problem. People hurling rocks up there and shattering solar panels and constantly having to replace them. But we can also take a look at the, um, warranty, the coverage, the replacement, the maintenance, um, that's involved. According to them, no, they, they, I think they're committed to that. That's they, they're responsible for it.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, then you would have to get that right and everything else.
Right.
Okay.
I do think the damage, the vandalism is legitimate concern. I mean, every, it, it happens a lot places. I mean, they, and I was in the library where we just put the pizza tables down. And, um, the park in the back and invariably we'd find ways to, to change, chain them or try to affect them to ground. And we stopped doing it because every table won't look in the, in the lake, you know, and that's just. Um, and it's not everybody, it's a small group who's been doing it, but it's, because that was an isolated area. This area is not quite as isolated as that area.
Um, tom- tomorrow, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. CP and we'll, we, we do have a, uh, a piece running with Studio J. They're a ride approved, um, architectural and design firm. That we've used for specifications for ride projects in the past. So, and they're very familiar with it. So we'll, we'll pursue it with them. But I don't, i- if there's a, a cost of five thousand dollars to do that, I don't know if that's where we're, we're there yet.
There is a cost.
Right, but what I'm saying is I don't think we're there yet authorized to do that. And I think we're at the point of, okay, what's URI doing? I haven't seen it, but what is URI doing? Are they happy with it? Do they, can they not plow? Whatever, whatever the issue is. And take a look at that and let us know.
We'll do that.
Um, you know, but if, I, I mean, I, I can tell you, if. If they completely say it's a, it's not a good idea, then move forward on the RFP for the other, for the, for the. You know, we don't wanna hold it up. We just, we don't have enough answers.
Okay. Yeah. That's, that's something my feeling.
Okay, and I just, this cost assessment from, um, um, Studio J. Um, is based on green development project, almost, is that correct?
Right.
And we, we had definitely some concerns about that, even to begin with on our own. So, um, I do feel we have to do our due diligence. And just make sure that we've covered all the names that cannot be.
Yep.
Yeah.
Superintendent, thank you. I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Um, so you want us to continue this? So you wanna put it back on if you need to or?
No, you can continue.
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue, uh, item number five of old business.
So move.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Any further business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes.